Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Deputy Mayor of Nottinghamshire, and I am the Lord Lieutenant of Buckinghamshire.
May I please, Your Ladyship, I appear with Miss Cafferty for the appellate, and Mr Martin Chamberlain appears, friend of the Court, Mr Jonathan Moffat, for the Secretary of State intervening.
Well, we are grateful to you, Mr Arden, for the suggestion that in this case we needed an amicus, and we are grateful to Mr Chamberlain for coming along in that capacity with the assistance of the Attorney General. So, thank you.
I think your Ladyship overstates it. I asked whether we had to raise it. The case concerns the conditions that an authority may apply to a licence for occupation of an HMO. It offers, by way of simple, straightforward, obvious answers, three different solutions. Friend of the Court says the authority may apply a condition which limits the class or category of occupier even for the purpose of rendering the HMO suitable for a greater number of occupiers or households than otherwise. Secretary of State says the authority may apply a condition which limits the class or category of occupier, but not in order to set a different maximum number of persons or households, and we say conditions are concerned with how an HMO is managed, used and occupied so as to make it suitable for a particular number of households or persons, but not by whom. That said, our case does overlap with or subsume that of the Secretary of State. We say, I don't think we need to go to it just for the record, as it were, at twenty-three of our case, the legislation is unequivocal, it's concerned with pure numbers. Even the conditions which make it suitable are to make it so suitable, a suitable for a maximum number. We say there's no room for the introduction of qualification, it is households or persons. That's what we've said, so it does subsume the same argument. The same at paragraph twenty-eight. No doubt the intention in the present case was to allow occupation at a lower standard or by a greater number than would otherwise have been permitted. So if my lady fair, Mr Moffat, is correct, we would still succeed on the appeal. Lady, Mr Chamberlain relies on, in his case, paragraphs twenty to twenty-one, page one oh four, on the nineteen ninety-nine consultation paper, which is at tab thirty-eight, page eleven eighty, and a reference in it, I'm afraid I haven't actually, if I have to give the number, to property being suitable for six able-bodied cognizant adults, but not for the same number of mentally or physically disabled or elderly persons. What I think he fails to appreciate with respect is that part two is not the only source of legislation specifically applicable to HMOs, nor indeed the starting point when we consider conditions, I'm sorry, housing conditions as opposed to licence conditions. The nineteen ninety-nine consultation paper foreshadowed this. It's in the Authority's bundle, bundle three, tab thirty-eight, page twelve oh one, section three, part C, paragraphs three and four.
Sorry, page?
Page twelve oh one.
Thank you very much.
Is the page that I'm going to go to. And this is where it was raising the issues on which it was consulting. "The government is currently reviewing the existing housing fitness standard, partly in response to calls for the standard to cover the areas that are believed to pose the most significant health and safety risks, and also to consider the way the standard is applied. Following the favourable response to a consultation exercise, work is in hand to develop and test a fitness rating as a replacement for the current housing fitness standard. A fitness rating would encompass all the important health and safety risks in the home and distinguish between the varying severity of those risks. As such, it would provide a more effective mechanism for identifying and targeting action on those dwellings which present the worst health and safety risks. HMO standards would clearly need to reflect such fitness rating, and so on." And I'm going to go, therefore, to that, because it is an important starting point. HMO regulation of standards in part two of the two thousand and four Act follows and is explicitly subordinate to part one, which introduced the, it's a mouthful, Housing and Health Safety Rating System, which, as it were, lock, stock and barrel replaced the ages-old concept of fitness for human habitation, which in various forms was there in the nineteenth century. And the key point about this, I'm not going to go into it at length, but I will go to it, is it does determine whether action is to be taken by reference not just to physical conditions in a house, but also to its actual or potential occupiers. This is entirely new.
Mr Arden, can we just see where the Act says that part two is subordinate to part one?
Sixty-seven, four, section sixty-seven, four.
Thank you.
When it comes to part one, Lord, it gets even clearer, as it were. The point I want to, I was just, in fact, just about to make this point. I'm not referring to part one because happenstantially it applies to HMOs, but it is directly aimed at it. And the important point is that because it deals with potential occupiers, the practical effect is that you look, when assessing risk, to the most vulnerable possible occupier. As I say, that's completely new. And therefore, I'm going to start at part one. For the avoidance of doubt, we are not relying on the former law, as cited by both Mr Chamberlain and Mr Moffat, and which they've asked to include in the Authority's bundle. Respectfully, we don't think it's of any assistance at all. I do need to pause on it briefly, in case I'm wrong on that, and any of your Ladyships or your Lordships want to refer to the old law as cited in the cases, just to correct a couple of minor things, because obviously you wouldn't want it to be inaccurate if you do so. So Mr Chamberlain at paragraph three and Mr Moffat at his annex, paragraph two, say that regulatory controls in respect of HMOs were first introduced by part four of the nineteen fifty-seven Housing Act. It was, in fact, the Housing Repairs and Rents Act nineteen fifty-four. Fifty-seven Act was a consolidating act. And it introduced regulatory controls in relation to both housing conditions and overcrowding of houses or parts of houses let in lodgings or occupied by members of more than one family. They were replaced by similar provisions in the fifty-seven Act. Mr Moffat refers to overcrowding. The point I simply want to make is that overcrowding law is a separate part of the Housing Acts and is still in the nineteen eighty-five Act, not to be confused with HMO law. Mr Moffat in his annex three refers to the eighty-five Act as introducing the phrase "occupied by persons who do not form a single household". Mr Chamberlain gets it right, it's nineteen sixty-nine, at his paragraph four. That's all I'm going to say about that, and I'm sorry to have to do it, but just in case. Lady, Lords, therefore, I'm going to go to the Act, the two thousand and four Act, which is at tab one of volume one of the Authority's, page five seven six. I apologise to my lady, Lady Black, I'm used to saying my lady singular. And I'll break the habit as soon as I can. Section one of the two thousand and four Act introduces the Housing and Health Safety Rating System, HHSRS. So the important point I wanted to make there is, it introduces it. I'm obviously not going to go through it at any depth, it's incredibly complex and it's very unpopular, unfairly so. It's very sophisticated, but it does have a lot of complexity. And the point I want to make is that one, four, on page five seven seven, it's addressing residential premises, meaning a dwelling, an HMO, unoccupied HMO accommodation. HMO means, as in part two. You get the same in section two, which defines the two key concepts in HHSRS, category one, category two, hazards. And hazard means any risks, this is on page five seven eight, to the health or safety of an actual or potential occupier, I've made that point, of a dwelling or HMO which arises from a deficiency in the dwelling or HMO. So, at risk of repetition, it's not just because part one happens to, unfitness law happened to catch HMOs, but it was never targeting it. This Act does target it explicitly. Again, you get paragraph, section three, over the page five seven nine, and they have to keep housing conditions in their area under review with a view to identifying any action that needs to be taken. And again, the provisions are this part, part two, and also something called selective licensing, which I think we can avoid, and management orders, which I will come to briefly, I apologise. Just now, running through it quite quickly before deciding on one particular part, just so that you have some familiarity with the structure. Section five, category one hazards, there's a duty to take action. Section five, five eight one, section seven, five eight three, category two, there's a power to take such action, to take enforcement action. Enforcement action starts at page five nine three, or so far as I'm going to, no, that was earlier, there's improvement dates to this. I want to refer, I don't want to go through the whole lot of everything they can do. There's enforcement action, you'd expect it. Prohibition, prohibiting, prohibit, what have you. And it's not germane, what is germane is prohibition orders related to category one hazards at section twenty on page five nine three. It has the option of making a prohibition order, which obviously can prohibit the use of premises and an HMO. And they have power to make prohibition order under section twenty-one. I want to dwell, if I may now, rather than coming back to it later, on section twenty-two for a minute, the content of prohibition orders, because, as I'm sure you all appreciate, a lot turns, or something turns anyway, on the phrase "use and occupation", and Mr Chamberlain suggests they must have a different meaning. We don't agree with that, but again, may be wrong. And section twenty-two deals with the contents of a prohibition order, and at subsection three, this is page five nine four, "such prohibition or prohibitions on the use of any premises", subs four, page five nine five, "may prohibit use for all purposes or any particular purpose", and then, under subs five, elaborating on use in four, "a prohibition may in particular relate to occupation of the premises". So to suggest that they mean something completely different doesn't really stand up. And as we will be saying, it's a composite phrase designed to avoid arguments about whether something is use or occupation. That's the section which says you can, different people, parts. Ah, yes. And then I want to stay on subsection five, for reasons I suspect you will appreciate. "A prohibition may in particular relate to occupation going to be of the premises or part by particular descriptions of persons". Now, we do rely on the fact that here at part one, the Act does explicitly allow enforcement action to be taken, which has the effect of governing occupation by particular descriptions. And you'll appreciate where ahead of me we say that isn't allowed in part two, where they don't have anything similar. Just skipping...
So what would be an example of a prohibition order which regulated occupation or banned occupation of premises by a particular description? Bring it to life for us.
I've got examples of almost everything else except that.
Well, let's come back to it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Child, a child. The premises might be considered not appropriate for a child.
Yep.
Equally, I imagine, for elderly, or elderly persons.
Well, certain sorts of elderly person. We do differ.
My lady, I do know that. Skipping through the rest of part one, page six oh eight, section forty allows emergency remedial action. Section forty-three on page six eleven, emergency prohibition orders. On page six one four, we find that the nineteen eighty-five Act, parts of which, of course, are still in force, which deals with slum clearance, demolition orders. Again, this is now targeted at dwellings or an HMO. And really, that's all I'm going to say, but I'm making the point that HMOs are four-square within part one. That is where the governance, or the regulation, or protection of housing conditions in HMOs is to be found. Part two is additional, and very largely, as we'll see, aimed at such matters as amenities, available amenities, but also the added risks. Lord, ladies, lords, page six two three is where part two starts. And that introduces the requirement of licensing for HMOs to which the part applies, which are required to be licensed. It is a national scheme, though there can be local variations. The local variations can add, they can't detract from the national scheme. Local variations could increase the remit of part two. That's designation. Authorities have duties to make arrangements necessary to secure the effective implementation. And this is subsection five, page six two three, over to page sixty-four, "and to ensure that all applications fully to be determined are determined within a reasonable time. See, and to satisfy themselves as soon as reasonably practicable that there are no part one functions which ought to be exercised in relation to the premises". So on sixty-seven, four, I went to in response to a particular question from Lord Wilson, you do see the carry-through of the relevance of part one. Section fifty-six allows additional licensing, designation of areas. It's supposed to be where HMOs are being managed sufficiently ineffectively to give rise to particular problems. I must say, most local authorities have found that problem, and some people are cynical enough to say it's a huge money spinner, because they can set their fees for licence applications. I'm going to skip designation, because it doesn't really add anything to what we're dealing with today. Section sixty-one, page six two eight, "every HMO to which this part applies must be licensed unless a temporary exemption notice or an interim or final management order". An interim or final management order is effectively the authority take over the property. Those who are familiar with it, it's the old control order, the earlier law. "A licence under this part is a licence authorising occupation of the house by not more than a maximum number of household or persons". That's what it's concerned with, and that is all. That is what a licence is, it's for a maximum number of persons or households.
Mr Arden, I can well see that you would want, a local authority would want to set a maximum number of persons, that's obvious. Why would it want to make its licence in terms of a maximum number of households in circumstances where a household can be one person or nineteen?
You obviously do have households in houses that are being used in flats, which are often not self-contained, and so are HMOs. By allowing households, you open up the door, of course, to rooms being used by a couple, which they couldn't, which would increase the number. Beyond that, I think it's the flexibility of it.
Very well, thank you.
I'm told that was right behind me. Section sixty-two deals with temporary exemption, where the house is, they're not going to, is on route to not needing to be licensed. Section sixty-three is important, page sixty-three oh. "Application must be made to the authority. Recalls for such requirements the authority may specify. Requires to be accompanied by a fee fixed by the authority. Appropriate national authority may make regulations which may specify in manner and form copies specified information which is to be supplied in connection with applications", and so on. Those are the two thousand and six regulations which we will come to. When we do so, we will find there is nothing in them about the identity of occupants, generally or specific. Section sixty-four, "where an application is made, the authority must either grant or refuse the licence. If satisfied as to the matters in subsection three, that the house is reasonably suitable for occupation by not more than the maximum number of households or persons mentioned in subsection four, or that it can be made so suitable by the imposition of conditions under section sixty-seven", that does go on, and there are personal characteristics which are involved in part two, but they are all the personal characteristics of the person managing or owning the house. And the number in subs four is the maximum number specified in the application or some other maximum number decided by the authorities. Our first point, which we really make at paragraphs twenty-one to twenty-three of our printed case, is that it is all about the number of households or persons as specified, not students, but persons. At section sixty-five, still on page six three two, "the authority cannot be satisfied with purposes sixty-four three a, the house is reasonably suitable for occupation by a particular maximum number of households or persons if they consider that it fails to be prescribed standards for occupation by that number of households or persons. But they may decide it's not reasonably suitable even if it does say", this is the point I was trying to make, that there's minimum standards, but they can apply higher standards. Sixty-six gets back to personal considerations, but again, it's all about the management. Then we get sixty-seven, which is obviously central. "A licence may include such conditions as the local housing authority consider appropriate for regulating all or any of the following: management, use and occupation of the house concerned and its condition and contents. Conditions may in particular include, so far as appropriate in the circumstances, conditions imposing restrictions or prohibitions on the use or occupation of particular parts of the house by persons occupying it". You may recall that we were somewhat critical of the Court of Appeal because a section that was sort of rewritten. And I've already taken you to subsection four, which I described as the primacy, or whatever, anyway, describing as the primacy, of part one. Section sixty-eight, I think we need to note, it's really sixty-eight four, a licence is for a maximum period of five years, but it can be for less. Sixty-nine is also relevant. "The authority may vary a licence with the agreement of the licence holder or if they consider there's been a change of circumstances since the time the licence was granted". Subsection three applies where they're considering whether to vary and are considering what number of households or persons is appropriate as the maximum number. So to illustrate that, if a licence was granted for a particular sharing arrangement, and I can't say it can't be, but that sharing arrangement is no longer the way the place is being occupied, the authority can vary and set a lower number. deals with revocation. I don't think revocation would include breach of a condition.
Yeah.
Rather, as distinct from variation because of change of circumstances, it was considered sufficient sanction in the Court of Appeal. But I don't otherwise need to go to it. Section seventy-two, just for information, is offences in relation to HMOs. The provisions do, of course, create criminal offences. The provisions do of course create criminal offences. Section seventy six is for transitional arrangements where, as a result of new orders, HMO provisions apply to properties, and a property falls into it. Subsection four applies where HMO which is licensed, so is licensed under the existing law, is occupied by more households or persons than the number permitted, and the occupation began before the licence came into force, and it's defence to say that you'll take your reasonable steps. It's difficult to see how that fits in with any notion of different numbers according to conditions. It's straightforwardly numbers. I'm not saying it's impossible, I could always stretch things, but on the face of Ladies and lords, we're go to page six five two. Section two five O. Orders and regulations made by statutory instrument. Any power to make an order or regulations may be exercised so to make different provision for different cases or different or description of case or different purposes or areas. Some reliance is placed on the fact that the new order, I'm not sure whether you've all grasped, but there is a new order in force, and it would have.
In force?
Yes, it's now in force. I've got the note, I'll give it to you. Well, it's, sorry, it's in law. It's not in force till the first October, sorry. Yeah, but it has become, it's past its, it's no longer a draft, is what I meant. That that differentiates between occupiers of different ages, above and below ten. We don't think that that does lend a lot of support to the notion that you can have different conditions for, and it does operate as a condition, but it matters not because the Secretary of State has given explicit power to differentiate. Page six five five, we have the meaning of house in multiple occupation. I'm not planning to go through this, it's quite detailed. So you can have houses in multiple occupation of a conventional sort, you can have flats in multiple occupation, you can have buildings adapted, and so on and so forth, and we're not really concerned with that here, I don't think. I do want to draw attention to the fact that to be an HMO, the living accommodation has to be occupied by persons as their only or main, by persons who do not form a single household. This is at two B and C, and you get it later in the other provisions, and who are occupying as their only or main residence, or are to be treated as so occupying it. And then you get the same in subsection, well, three imports, two, four has the same at four C and four D. But at five, a property is not an HMO if listed in schedule fourteen, which I'll be coming to. Section two five eight. Details when persons are to be regarded as not forming a single household. I'm sure it's been appreciated that there was a case called Barnes, which set down quite a difficult schedule of considerations, explicitly addressed actually to young people sharing, I think students sharing. There's another case called Rogers. And this section, unarguable, and anyone tends to the contrary, was intended to replace the case law, and this sets down a statutory codification of when people are to be treated as occupying or not occupying as a single household. A single household if all members of the same family. Very late coming back on your household of nineteen persons, I did mention that there are also overcrowding laws in the Housing Act nineteen eighty five, and they are not disapplied, so your nineteen crammed into a two-room flat would get caught by that And the circumstances are circumstances of a, sorry, they're not, they do not form a single household unless members of the same family or described circumstances. It's then explicit as to who is the same family in three and four, down to a considerable level of detail. There's no room here for arguing about it. And we will come to the regulations which deal with who is to be treated, but I'm sort of anxious not to keep going back and forth. Page six six one, persons treated as occupying as only your main residence. And that includes a person's residence for the purpose of undertaking a full-time course of further ed, higher education, refuge, or other circumstances prescribed. They include migrant workers. Obviously, it's needed to avoid the issue, these are people who may well have more than one place they live. Section two six three is the definition of persons having control, persons managing, I'm not going into it, I'm just identifying it for you. Section two six four, calculation of numbers of persons, and that provides for persons under a particular age to be disregarded, or persons to be treated as a fraction of a person. This is age on overcrowding law, where some persons are half young people. And section two six five, an order may modify, two six five three, any enactment including this enactment. I say that because, as I say, reliance is placed on the new order and its differentiation in ages, if that has any influence anyway, it's permitted, Secretary of State can differentiate. Lords, ladies, can I move on to six six five? Schedule two. No, I don't think we asked for that to be in, actually, so I won't. Page six seven six. This identifies the conditions to be included, and it's this, it is this schedule which is amended by the new order. So it has a mandatory condition as regarding room sizes and who may occupy, and that's how it operates, by amending the act, which, as I said, the Secretary of State is entitled Lord, the Court of Appeal plays some reliance on paragraph two, obviously countering my argument that the act did not go into who occupied by relying on the fact that licenceholders' conditions may require licenceholder to demand a reference. I'm afraid that wasn't raised in argument, that's only under part three, and we're not in part three at all. Part three is something called selective licensing, and it's to do with low housing demand and antisocial behaviour, and authorities can effectively make everywhere licensable, all or most properties. Schedule five starts at page six seven nine. At six eight five, you get part two procedure relating to variation or revocation of licensing. I'm not going to go to the procedure, I'm simply providing, ladies and lords, with the references that I referred to variation under section sixty nine. We then come at tab five, page six nine eight. Buildings which are not HMOs for the purposes of this act, excluding part one, so they're still subject to HHSRS. And you get public sector bodies, including registered providers of social housing, i.e. in the old vernacular, housing associations, local authorities, and some social housing with a person is nonetheless a profit-making registered provider. Two B is cooperative societies. Three, buildings regulated otherwise than under this act. And four, obviously key to our argument, buildings occupied by students. And it then has tight controls on that. Got to be occupied solely principally by persons who occupy for the purpose of a full-time course. Manager or controller has to be an educational establishment or a specified person. the authority, the National Authority, the Secretary of State, may have regard, National Assembly in Wales, may have regard to the extent to which the management is in conformity with any code of practice, so it's not a blanket exemption for property managed by But ultimately, halls of residence are usually taken out of the regime because a code of practice applies them. Power of six, buildings occupied by owners. And buildings occupied by two persons. Ladies, going to tab fourteen, page eight oh one. This again is really just for information, it's how the HHSRS works, but it strongly supports when you look at, if you glance through it, the extent to which you go down into detail and consider potential occupiers and vulnerable occupiers, and it goes down to specific occupiers with a lot of regard to the elderly and the young. And then it does describe the twenty nine. Factors, classes of harm and so on. I said it was complex, it is. I'm not going to waste any time by going through it, but I think it's quite relevant for you at least to know it's there and that it is elaborated in great detail and is a sophisticated code of risk of harm, which is targeted at HMOs. And all of this really goes to, as it were, Mr. Chamberlain's six able adults, who are really the governors, but never mind. The two thousand and six regulations that matter, that we're concerned with. Well, the first set is at tab fifteen, page eight two two, and that sets the basic application of these provisions in paragraph three, page eight two three. Comprises three stories occupied by five or more persons, and occupied by persons living in two or more single households. That's also changed, isn't it? This has also changed under the daft order, under the new order, but we're not concerned with what the charges are, changes are. And typically, a local scheme will substitute four persons for five. The principal two thousand and six regulations with which we are concerned, again for information, mostly is at tab, are at tab sixteen, which starts at page eighty seven. And it identifies persons at paragraph three to be regarded as forming a single household. And you have there, I feel really feel as if I'm appearing in the Lady Chatterley case, one's servants, various household employees. Four is parents. Five is persons to be treated as occupiers of only your main residence. That's where we get migrant workers and asylum seekers. Page six deals with the buildings which are excluded because they're regulated otherwise than under the act. Power of seven, I'm now up to page eight three two. Applications, licences and the particulars. To read it out would be to read it out for the purpose of proving a negative, there's nothing in there to do with the occupiers. And schedule one lists the buildings which are taken out because they're regulated elsewhere, things like children's homes, prisons and so on. What's the numbers of your order? What is the SI number?
Two thousand and eighteen, six one six.
Yes. At tab nineteen, your order, the number is six one six. Eight eight six seven, the easiest thing is just to write it in there. That's its SI number. And that was all I was going to go to from the authorities' bundle, as it were, from the act itself. And we say, on the basis of the act alone, we say that it is concerned to produce a national code which is concerned with numbers of households or persons. That's our paragraphs twenty one to twenty three. That who is brought within or left out of the framework is dealt with legislatively. Powers twenty four to twenty six, and we say there's no room for Paragraphs twenty four to twenty six, and we say there's no room for authorities to add their own classes. If that's wrong, in any event, students are comprehensively dealt with by section two five nine two. That was the one which said they are occupiers in any or main. And schedule fourteen, which says only if, they're only exempt if they are in student hostel hall of residence. I want to go next, if I may please, to the phrase management use and occupation. Mr Chamberlain says at his forty four, two things about this. That occupation must have been intended to add something and that on a natural reading, the condition regulating the occupation of a house is apt to exclude one that governs how, sorry, by whom it may be occupied. We take issue with both of those propositions. As to the first. We refer to Benion on statutory interpretation in the authorities bundle, volume two, tab thirty seven. And draw your attention at page eleven seventy six in the bundle, authorities bundle two. Section twenty two three deals with composite expressions. And the particular passages I rely on are page eleven seventy seven. A composite expression may be used in the middle of that page, single composite class, used to create a single composite class and avoid arguments about whether something falls within one term or another. This is a condition governing use, not occupation or vice versa. The terms may overlap, and we've shown that statutorily they certainly do in this Act. And where a composite expression is used, it's not necessary to determine that all the terms are satisfied. I also refer, page eleven seventy eight, to unnecessary words, under the heading unnecessary words. Peril string is sometimes used for a single word but convey the same meaning, very common feature in traditional legal expression. Example is fit and proper. Here the addition of proper adds little if anything to fit. The main modern approach is generally to avoid excessive verbiage and rely more heavily on common sense for still cases where the drafter may use very similar words to avoid argument or because unintended implications may be drawn. Well, you can see it quite easily here. One could say bedroom two may only be used as a bedroom for one person or one household comprising a couple. Bedroom two may only be used as a bedroom and occupied by one person. Bedroom two may only be occupied by one person. Bedroom two may only be used by one person or a couple. They all mean exactly the same thing.
Why in section sixty seven two A does it therefore translate into use or occupation? If it's a composite phrase.
Yes.
That wouldn't be a natural development.
I'm sorry, I haven't followed exactly.
If it is one thing, use and occupation. Why do you split it into two things, use or occupation, in that sub-paragraph?
Section sixty seven refers to use.
And occupation in one A.
And use or occupation. In our respectful submission, nothing, the terms are interchangeable. At any rate, occupation may be use. Use includes occupation.
We don't need to say what they said in two then.
Well, restrictions can be imposed on use. For example, only to use a particular room for storage, say. Or occupation. But that is dealing with particular parts of the house by persons occupying it. So you've got persons occupying. And you may be restricting their occupation of part or their use of part. I assume that that is the thinking behind it.
Mr Arden, is this issue on this appeal related to whether section sixty seven gives a pre-standing jurisdiction to include conditions of the sort specified? Or whether, forgive me, I'm sorry. Or whether section sixty seven is ancillary to section sixty four three? And so the sort of conditions that you can impose under section sixty seven can only be in aid of section sixty four three A, in aid of making a house reasonably suitable for occupation by not more than the maximum number of households or persons.
It hasn't been argued that way at all until now. I don't think I can say that it has to be to limit the numbers. I don't think it's possible to read it that narrowly.
Thank you.
Well, Miss Gavish may follow me, she doesn't agree. But it doesn't say conditions, you know, under sixty four three, as it were.
Well, the mandatory commission, conditions are not all numbers related, are they?
No.
I mean, they have to do with gas safety and things like that.
Yes, the conditions that we have are not all confined, I think.
Well, if the gas isn't satisfactorily controlled, then the place isn't suitable for occupation by anybody.
Exactly. But you wouldn't give a licence for nil, refuse a licence.
So you could link that sort of thing to suitability for occupation by ex-households or persons, I would have thought.
Well, the requirement to have a gas safety certificate, which is what the mandatory condition is, that's not linked to, you'd need that whether you had five people or ten people.
Yeah.
It would be the same condition.
Yeah.
That's the only suggested putting.
I don't think, I don't think, I'd like to say that in sixty seven. I'd love to adopt this approach, it would be decisive in many ways, but I don't think I can.
Very well.
Turning to the second reading, and this really therefore does come up, it probably wouldn't come up on my Lord Wilson's linked proposition, but it comes up now I'm, as it were, with my concession that it's not linked, so I don't think I can say that. So we're talking about Mr Chamberlain's second proposition, which is natural reading. We don't accept. Because although it has, it can be freestanding, it nonetheless does go to suitability for occupation, not necessarily by a number, can't be completely any, any any phrase or any thought they have, it has to be linked to the proper occupation. We don't accept that who occupies, in the sense of what type of person, is the same as regulation of occupation, really for four reasons. First, what is in issue is the suitability of the property. I think, my lady, that applies, still applies to the gas safety certificate. It's not suitable for occupation if there isn't a certificate, it just doesn't go to numbers. You can't determine in our submission suitability by saying who occupies, only by saying how something is occupied. Saying who says nothing about how. If saying who did necessarily define how, then might be different, but it simply doesn't. Classes or categories such as students do not occupy in a particular way any more than, say, people on benefits or people of a particular race or gender. We have submitted throughout that this case has been tainted by a rather populist view of students. The second reason is that it is clear from part two in our respectful submission that what is regulated is the suitability of the house for occupiers, not the suitability of the occupiers for the house. That's the structure of part two. Thirdly. It would in our submission confer an extraordinary power on authorities to decide who can occupy the landlord's property, or at least what sort of person. Without taking over and exercising powers to have a management order where your authorities take it over. Finally, we say Parliament would have said so, and we refer to section twenty two, which I've already taken you. If there is a difference. I think I'm probably now answering Lady Barker, at least having another stab at doing so. If there is a difference, management is relatively straightforward. Use goes to how an HMO or part of it is used, and occupation goes to how it is occupied. For example, a basement room not used for anything other than storage, I think I have said this, an attic room may be used for sleeping, provided it's not occupied by more than one person, or provided it's used in conjunction with another room. Ladies and lords, that's all I'm going to say about occupation. I want to move on as my next heading to the use of guidance, which has littered, as it were, the judgements below, obviously guidance can't change the laws, all the matter for you. But I want to address this issue of the different ways that people live and the two sets of guidance, meaning the nineteen ninety four guidance from the Institute of Environmental Health, from which Mr Chamberlain has quoted quite extensively actually, and albeit less so the Dash guidance, which the authority here also uses as published guidance, although they have their own discrete, as it were, local, it's a Midlands area, Dash, and they have their own guidance. It's all guidance, it can't supplant the legislation, and as an elementary proposition of public law, it must always be possible for the authority to depart from it, they must always consider doing so, if asked to do so or if caused to do so. Mr Chamberlain contends that the nineteen ninety four guidance is still current, primarily, I think exclusively, because he found it on the website of the chartered institute. It acquired a charter after nineteen ninety four, which is why I'm using the different phrase. As he noted, however, when we quizzed with him, it had been taken down. Now, I want to make expressly clear that I hadn't, we had absolutely nothing to do with that, we did not contact our friends in the institute to say, yeah, I'm out. If it's still been there, we might have, but we didn't. But we don't see in any event how a practice note under completely different legislation, both in regards, HMOs, because they were then under the eighty five Act, which was completely different, and part one, which replaced fitness, can possibly still be considered current. You have, I'm not going to go to, can I just give you where it is to be found? It's in volume four, tab forty eight, page sixteen eighty seven. But you'll find that it refers to circular under the Housing Act eighty five and the housing management of houses regulations nineteen ninety, none of which have any currency or relevancy at all any longer, a dead law. So far as the nineteen ninety four guidance suggests that there are different ways of living together which may impact on whether an HMO is suitable, that's of course correct beyond argument, and we take no issue with it, we have never taken any issue with that. If a group of people are sharing, buying food, meeting together and so on, though the kitchen requirements are different for those in a house of conventional bed sitting rooms or a house where there isn't that sort of sharing, with respect, that's obvious. The guidance on HMOs under the two thousand and four Act produced by Dash, which you'll find at volume four, tab forty seven, page sixteen eighty, refers, if we want to go to Lady Chatterley, who can mark it up. Seven, refers, sorry, it's tab, volume four, authorities, volume four, tab forty seven, page sixteen eighty and sixteen eighty one. And it refers to HMOs where occupants live as a cohesive group and, as Mr Chamberlain cites, to different facilities where the occupants tend to live separately. We say that all this about this guidance is a red herring. The guidance is guidance to authorities and beyond them to, for the public to know, landlords or whatever to know, as to when it may be appropriate to vary standards. That does not make the circumstances act as a condition. It's confusing two things, the circumstances when standards may be different on account of how people are living, and a condition governing how people live. Our point is that sharing may be a basis for relaxing standards, not because a letting is a joint tenancy or structured in some other way, but because the sharers have that degree of voluntary closeness that is referred to in the two cases under the old law. And even so, an authority or tribunal needs to be satisfied the group is likely to hold together for good well bearing the life of the licence in mind, in other words, it's not a temporary thing. And so far as authorities do look at particular circumstances and may have issues such as sharing in mind, it remains free to authority or tribunal to determine whether occupation of an HMO for which a licence is sought does comprise cohesive living or shared occupation for the purpose of the disapplication or reduction of standards. In our submission, what the tribunal In our submission, what the tribunals below the Court of Appeal are doing is approaching the issue from the wrong end. A decision to allow a lower standard has to work from the ground up, to look at what the occupation is intended to be, and whether that merits a change in the standards. You don't look at the occupiers and superimpose a way of living on them. These decisions put the cart before the horse. They identify a category of occupier and assume that this justifies lower standards. It's top-down, it needs to be bottom-up. This is really very important. Well, firstly, because we wouldn't otherwise have been allowed to come here, but it's very important. Because the consultation paper, which was in Authorities' Volume, I'm not going to, don't need to actually go to it, but to give you the reference, Authorities' Volume Three, Tab Thirty-eight, Page one-one-eight-seven, on the background, notes that the overwhelming majority of occupiers of shared houses are under thirty and over half are in full-time education. Thus, what's actually been decided here is that these properties can be occupied at a lower standard. I said by almost half, I suppose you could have a bit, but by a very large section of the target market intended to be protected. That's why we say that categories of legislation and not individual decision-making. We are not saying, and have never said, that different standards might not be permitted in a particular case. But we do say that if occupation of this sort is to be used to justify different standards, it must be based on how it is, how it is proposed actually to use or occupy an HMO. As obviously, we accept a licence may be granted, things may change, and that's why I took you to the variation provisions. Going back to guidance, how much detail to go into is a matter for each authority. Nottingham have chosen not to make a statement about sharing in their guidance because in their experience, this tends to create an expectation, which becomes a demand, which is unhelpful in discussions and negotiations as opposed to a bland starting point. That's a policy choice they're entitled to make. But we do not accept that there is a well-known single concept of cohesive living. Barnes, Authorities' Volume Two, Tab Twenty-One, which is under the old law and was the leading case on chef.
Page?
It's, I'm so sorry, it's page eight-eight-nine.
Thank you.
I'm not going to go through it because we're not having an argument about whether or not this house is sharing, because that's all been replaced. I am making the point that there is no such thing as a single concept of cohesive or shared living. Page eight-nine-oh, we cited in our twenty case. I suppose a bit cheekily, I should acknowledge since I am the author of it, the headnote, because it succinctly summarizes the A to I, what is otherwise to be found at somewhat greater length, pages seven-two-four to seven-two-five. And this was the case which, and it, it has all these indices here. And of course, they can vary in any particular case. It was held in that case that they were a single household. Rogers, which is also Authorities', Tab Thirty-three, in the same volume, at Page eleven thirty-three. And taking the headnote at Page eleven thirty-four, 'Occupants currently set to form a single household unless there is between the relationship which provides a particular reason for their living together', the decision there, but it then went on to say, 'A group of students at the same university will be considered to be in a household even if they didn't know each other beforehand.' The point I'm making, apart from the fact that, of course, this is all now completely replaced by the Act, what's that? Completely replaced by the Act definition of. But what does come out from it? It's just two propositions that I make on the basis of those cases. First, in each of them, the Court of Appeal, in order to decide whether there was sharing, in that case meant a single household, it doesn't anymore, was looking at how premises were actually occupied. The actual arrangements, wasn't saying because they're students, okay. Rogers might get a bit nearer that, but it doesn't do it. And secondly, what comes out of it is that there are, all those indices here mean that there are many different ways that people share. May I respectfully submit your ladyships and your lordships know that, highly likely, to our direct or indirect experience of it.
Can you help me how it works in practice? You say that the local authority can take account of how it's actually going to be occupied.
Lady, yes.
But it's not being occupied at the moment of the application because they need the licence first.
Well, they can apply for the licence when they've got the occupiers. What is likely to happen is you have a property which was first licensed when the regulations came into effect and was probably occupied, and then would have been replaced. So the licence will continue. At some point, it will overlap with the five-year and a new application will be made.
Or else somebody buys a house, does eat up and hopes,
Absolutely, it can be either.
Say students into it, so.
I was simply saying, it doesn't always mean that it's empty.
No, but just pursuing it for a moment. So the local authority looks at the circumstances of that particular application and says, yes, it will be all right for that, and you say that's permissible?
Yes.
But what it can't do, and this is a licence which might be granted for five years, it can't say and only for that sort of occupation, because it can't impose a condition. Is that right?
Can't, it can impose a condition as to sharing and use. So it could impose a condition, for example, that there be a common room for use, that, as in this house, or one of the two, that this room can only be used by someone who's got another room. It can do all sorts of things, but it's not saying students. So it can say, this is a licence which is appropriate for shared use, and it can define that, having a condition that all occupiers have access to the kitchen there.
So the only problem with this condition is mentioning students as opposed to defining the attributes of, say, a student?
No, it's not the attributes of students, it's got to be the attributes of how people are going to live. So can you define conditions which govern use and occupation such that effectively it achieves sharing? Yes.
You can.
Yes. And then you can go back and check it, and if it's not being used that way, you can, you have a variation. It's not a breach of condition. My lady, I come to in a moment, but you can't make a condition governing how people live. You can't require people to live in a particular relationship to one another. In the upper tribunal, the Deputy President said the concept of cohesive living is capable of described in a number of different ways. The basic idea is readily understood. We say that's a very broad approach, covering a number of arrangements, some of which may be such as to suggest different requirements, others may be so slight as not to do so. It's far too broad for something which has to give rise to the capacity for a criminal offence. And in any event, in our submission, letters to students cannot be said by any stretch to be synonymous with cohesive living, or to use Mr Chamberlain's expression, as a proxy for it. Sharing does cover such a range of arrangements, those forced on people by circumstances, to those which they actively wish to adopt, from simply living in the same house with a shared room or two, but buying one's own food and taking care of one's own room, to the same sort of sharing as, say, a married couple, or what have you. Authorities have to approach this with care. Cohesive living, if we go on using the same phrase. I think this is a direct, is part of my response to your ladyship. Cohesive living has not only to be defined, but it has to be genuine. At this end of the market, this is a very real issue and a very real concern. This end of the market is one which is riddled with examples of abuse, devices to avoid controls and so on. I mean, I'm not sure how many of your ladyships or lordships who remember non-exclusive occupations agreements where the landlord claimed to share the room or flat so there was no, no tenancy. You've got a history of, of people trying to avoid, I'm not saying these landlords are, but you do have to be very wary of groups, for example, which a landlord has put together for the purpose of making an HMO suitable. As I say, this isn't fanciful. In this area of practice, one positively expects a party to be taken to any watering down of requirements by reference to putatively cohesive groups of occupiers. So, again, my lady, yes, you could have an application when it's empty and define use and occupation effectively to limit it to a group sharing. You could do that, but it has to be genuine, and they, in those circumstances, normally the authority would check as well. But it does have to be genuine. It's critical that authorities and tribunals reach a clear view in every case as to the level of sharing, because this, this is protective legislation. And the fact is, as we got from the consultation papers, some may have no choice but to adopt a particular arrangement, and they should not be deprived of protection. It wasn't necessary, I'm not limiting this to a landlord who says, oh, well, you must put a group together, or a landlord putting a group together. Landlord saying, you need to put a group together. Now we're getting on a very familiar terrain, all of us who have, or have had children who are at university and we're not in all the residents throughout, will have some sort of experience of the sort of arrangements that are made and how students form themselves into groups. And we can think of individual examples of students looking around for another person to share, say, with whom they may have nothing in common and with whom the sharing element is slight, and in which individuals will indeed or may be living most of their time in their own rooms.
But there was a condition in this case imposed at the level of the Court of Appeal, that it should be available.
Should be available. Can I come on to that in a moment? Because making it available doesn't, if somebody has joined a group because they need somewhere to live and the other group needs one, oh, look, you know, let's take an extreme example of a group of ordinarily decent students, and they're looking around for someone, and they have to take a lawyer, a law student. They finally, there's no one else they can find, they'll have to put up with a law student. That student may have next to nothing in common, may not be sharing. The fact that there is a shared room doesn't mean they're going to use it. Now, there will be sharing arrangements which are genuine and may be intended to be, and there are sharing arrangements which aren't.
But in terms of protection of the students, what matters is that that facility is available, surely?
That's slightly equiparating it with the proposition that you might need less kitchen access if you've got sharing, which was in the Court of Appeal. It's not the same thing at all. You have to ensure, authorities have to ensure the health and wellbeing of the occupiers. And that, and that does mean that for a sharing arrangement to be effective in terms of the mental wellbeing that we're centrally concerned with, there's also health if you're locked in a small room and cleaning and eating there, you know. But the health and wellbeing has to be protected.
Where does wellbeing come into it? That's an enormously wide phrase. Health and safety, definitely.
I'm using it as to mean mental health.
You don't mean wellbeing in the widest sense of the term?
No, not in the wider sense. I mean in the sense of mental health. I didn't really want to use that phrase, but I will now use that phrase. But yes, authorities are protecting health in the widest sense. And if they felt that a sharing arrangement, albeit that there was a room, was actually not being used, was not being used by a cohesive group, it would perfectly within their rights to refuse the licence for that number. And the facts in these cases are very, very ambiguous, not to say opaque. There's very little evidence that in fact they were cohesive groups in each case. It does make the point that there are such groups. In fact, the respondent said of forty-four Rothse, this is in his application to the First Year Tribunal, Core Volume, Page two-seven-four, that inquiries were mostly from freshers, which implies either sole lettings, and the letting agreement is ambiguous, because students don't often come together that fast at the beginning of their college careers and sign up to joint liabilities with people they will mostly not know, or a joint, some may be a bit careless on that point, or a joint tenancy initiated or set up by the landlord, which means they would not be sharers in the conventional sense of people who've chosen to live together. I mean, except occupiers will not always be freshers as an E M S C V, page two-seven-six, assumes someone at forty-four Rothse suggests they were a group we met at all, which is quite common, if not to say at all. But what, but what that of youngsters away from home for the first time does not suggest a considerably enhanced level of informed choice. To the contrary, such sharers commonly find that it doesn't work, and one or two don't fit in, and keep to themselves or leave and have to be replaced. And there could be long periods when, again, people are forced into their own rooms. One further point on this, which really directly responds to my lady's point. I don't want to seem opportunistic about this, because it's a really, really serious problem. We've all had driven home to us in the last two or three years just how emotionally vulnerable students are. A recent study have them as the unhappiest and most anxious group of their age bracket. This has been the authorities' case all along, that people need a certain amount of space to themselves, which is what they've been trying to achieve. And you get that, that C V, Core Volume, Page three-six-seven, in the authorities' case on Fifty Butte Avenue, I think. Paragraph.
Sorry, what was it? What was the page reference that you gave?
Three-six-seven.
Oh, I just heard you say.
And I'm taking your ladieships and your lordships to this because I don't want it to be thought that these are points that have come from the advocate, as it were, to try and bolster up the case, it's been there all along. If there is no cohesiveness, and cohesiveness cannot be presumed, then the size of the bedroom will be all the more important as the use of the shared lounging dining space may be untenable. Ultimately, the only part of the house in which the tenant can actually have any privacy or control is their bedroom. Although they may have the use of a kitchen or lounge, that use will always be subject to the activity of other tenants. While a tenant may have the use of other parts of the house, the only place where there can actually be any certainty, they have any control over their ability to use the space available, is the bedroom. Going back to my lady, Lady Black's point about, I think, an application by someone where it's unoccupied is really the focus there. That doesn't apply in any of these cases, they were all occupied, and that has tended to be the norm, because there aren't an awful lot of people buying property and doing it up for this sort of thing, that tends now to be a commercial enterprise, places like Unite and so on, residents. An authority can of course only go so far with conditions to ensure that there's genuinely cohesive living. But those cases can be on the basis that the landlord does intend to let cohesive groups, doesn't have to be a condition, except the landlord's assurance of it. And in those circumstances, variation remains available. So they can go a long way with conditions as to use of occupation to underwrite cohesive living. Arguably, at an extreme, they can't actually push it to the final line of saying it is a condition that they live cohesively, and we say such a condition is anyway, even if it was possible, would not be meaningful. Can I turn next to age as a class? There's Mr Chamberlain's suggestion, C V, page one O six, that what is now the new order of the draft regulations making different space provisions for those that above and below ten support the proposition that conditions may apply to different classes of occupiers. The age of ten has a very long history in overcrowding law, and for ourselves, we don't think the division does denote classes in any meaningful sense. The whole world is ten and above or below. Ten or ten and above or ten and below. Certainly, it does not denote class in the way we use that term, which we alternate with categories might be better. Age division is only a class or category in the broader sense, and one which in context has obvious reasons. At the moment, if you go any real distance from it, it ceases to work, be that as it may, as I hope I've said in passing, but just to bring the proposition together, no support would be derived from this. The draft regulations amend the Act as if they're allowed to, the Act can and does draw a number of distinctions between classes, I've drawn your attention to the migrants, refugees and so on, those of you religious accommodation and so on, the Act can do anything. Preempt the argument that what we're dealing with is not worthy of the Act as a mandatory condition, that's why I took you to section two fifty, under which the draft regulations were laid, and while it does explicitly permit the Secretary of State to make different provision. Turning then penultimately to the Secretary of State's position. Obviously, we take no issue with his approach that you start with section sixty-four and determine a number of households or persons, and that a condition cannot be used to increase that number. If it's a neater approach than ours, so be it, now, as I said earlier, it overlaps with ours in any event, maybe the other side of the same coin, but we do take issue with his proposition at C V, call volume page one three four, that a condition may indicate a class of person by whom the HMO may be occupied, because in our submission, that conflicts with the Act. It's at the core of our submission that a power to determine who can occupy an HMO in an authority's area, other than an HMO which they own or which they have a management order on, is so they've been empowered to take over. And I've got a horrible feeling I forgot to take you to management order provisions. Maybe just before I sit down, I'll give you the reference to them. I'm sorry about that, I feel like a tab on. But as I said, it is what you think it means, which is the authority take it over. We say that's an extraordinary power to confer on local authorities to decide what type of person or who may occupy a landlord's property, and one that would require the clearest wording. We submit wording couldn't be clearer, it's about making the HMO suitable for a number of occupiers, not about selecting occupiers to suit the house, which is the landlord's business. A right to decide who can occupy would amount to a considerable power akin to a planning power, rather than a regulatory power, this is a regulatory power, not a planning power. The planning commissions may directly or indirectly dictate who lives in a property, as for example, some rural property might be reserved for agricultural workers.
I mean, that's quite a good example, isn't it, which I thought was against you, I mean, your planning is about use and control of land. And there was a debate as to whether you could actually control the occupier, but it was decided that you could have a condition.
Yes.
Controlling the occupier, but not because it says it's in the Act, but simply because...
It's about the use of, we currently have percentages of social housing, which.
Yes.
The thought of housing, but planning is one thing, this is in us, not a planning power.
No, but even if we're looking at the words of section sixty-seven one, relating to the management use and occupation of the house concerned, arguably, they're very broad words, which are, just as the words in the planning acts are pretty broad.
But you're taking use out, in which will certainly have a different meaning in one Act than another.
Oh, yes, of course it is.
But that's what I'm saying.
You were putting out the planning example or somehow supporting your case.
It does support it, because this is not a planning act in any sense, it's a regulatory act, that's what we're saying.
Yes, it's about the use and occupation of premises, just as planning acts are about the use of land.
It's not about the use, it's about regulating HMOs and how they may be used so as to ensure suitability for use as an HMO. So, I mean, I understand what the Lordship's saying, but I'm saying they are very different bodies of legislation. Planning is and always has been about managing the land supply and how it's used, it's a very different thing than a regulatory power, is our submission anyway. Ah, I do have the references, in tribunal management, in tribunal final management orders are at, I think, around section one O one, in any, the authority's volume one, tab one, page six five O, probably six five, probably six five one and two. We can obviously see how it might be thought desirable to prohibit occupation, for example, of an HMO near a school by someone with certain types of child conviction. Or one near an old people's home by someone with ASB convictions, or against whom an ASB injunction has been made. That sort of condition is something for a court in those proceedings to decide. Composing it as a condition on a landlord is making the landlord the enforcer of the criminal law, or analogous provisions, which is something which has to be done explicitly, as in the recent immigration provisions applicable to renting property, where landlords have to satisfy themselves that people are entitled to rent property. Nor in any event is it something that a landlord can effectively monitor. I can't monitor, a landlord cannot monitor whether someone has certain convictions, they have no access. Hardly proven negative. Again, there are circumstances to the housing acts when authorities can decline to house, it's actually now, authorities in Wales can decline to house, to allocate to people with certain antisocial behaviour convictions, but it's hedged about with appeals and reviews and so on. And as you have thought about HMO regulation, closest one comes, there can be rules to prevent ASB. We don't think that that can possibly be used, or should properly be used, to go to classes or categories of person. Another example might be a voluntary organisation letting to say women leaving the relationship home, I'm taking women because that's unconventional, albeit not for violence, because that would be covered by two five nine, refugees, or say, a voluntary organisation providing accommodation for recent immigrants. There are only two possibilities here, either it is a temporary arrangement, in which case there is no HMO, because these are cases where there's no deemed occupation, as many may, or it is intended to be indefinite, in which case it would prize an exemption from standards for a particular class, which is not permissible, because a condition as to who is to occupy, to go back to our sort of starting point on that, says nothing about how they occupy. And one could ask why the landlord should be allowed to let at a lower standard to a class. Conversely, why in this example, women or immigrants, have to accept substandard accommodation. The whole point of the legislation is to ensure that people who are vulnerable, not least because they don't have the wherewithal to buy or rent whatever they want, are not forced into something less. Unregistered voluntary organisations have not been given the right to an exception, any more than any other putatively or actually benign landlord. If it had been intended to allow conditions to be set by reference to particular types of persons, nothing could have been easier than to say so, just as is expressly provided for in part one of section twenty-two, which permits twenty-five, the authority to impose prohibitions on occupations of premises which relate to a particular description of person, is amply wide to include a negative prohibition, not by any other than. That's all we have to say about the Secretary of State's position, we stand on our ground that cannot have a condition limiting the class or category of person. People simply don't occupy differently. Can I come then to our second ground, which is rationality? We've set out what we mean here, in our printed case, our first proposition is that it's irrational to set conditions which do not achieve what they appear to be intended to achieve, it's irrational, as a second proposition, in a regulatory regime ultimately dependent on enforcement, to rely on conditions which are pleasantly unenforceable. We don't propose to go to the cases we cite, we haven't put them in the authority's bundle, because we didn't intend to, we think the propositions, oh, are they on there? No, they're not. The propositions are plain and are encompassed in any definition of rationality, those propositions would stand. Rather than going through each of the points made in our printed case, I want to try to bring the arguments together in the round, if I may, I'm conscious of time and it is a second, as it were, backup ground. As for the first proposition, that the condition does not achieve what it appears to be intended to achieve, the argument is fairly straightforward. Both first tier tribunals concluded the same way, you get this, if you will, at C V, pages one seven seven and one eight nine. The relevant room is adequate as a study bedroom where cohesive living is envisaged. Except the authority's concerns the accommodation may be inappropriate for occupiers who does not wish to participate in cohesive living, and the licence has to be fixed for purchase for five years, is not actually right, you can have much shorter licenses, maximum five years. Our tribunal finds that the potential problem may be overcome by the insertion of an appropriate condition, well, that's where we get. And the deputy president of the upper tribunal could see nothing, at the C V, page one six seven, could see nothing unlawful in formulating a condition applicable to a mode of occupation by a category of occupiers, if a house is suitable for them in greater numbers than it is for a different mode of occupation, that was in the upper tribunal. We make these points. The concept of cohesive living on its own is too vague to ensure a sharing of communal facilities, just using those words. As for a tenancy term requiring cohesion, well... I'm sorry, you can't, you simply can't require people to live cohesively. People can opt to do so, but you can't.
Surely that's not the test, we're asking if it's irrational, which is a very high test.
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying the condition is perfect, but if it goes some way to achieve its objective.
No, I'm saying it is irrational to impose a condition to try and require cohesive living, because you can't do it.
And again, I just think it was a planning analogy, I'm trying to think, I mean, what's your, what's your strongest case of a condition being held irrational and unlawful on those grounds? Can't for the moment think of one, I mean, there've been plenty of planning cases where conditions have been looked at and said, don't appear entirely effective. I know it isn't, but you've got to, I mean, what, give an example of a condition found irrational, because it wasn't perfect in terms of its ability to enforce it.
I'm not going to come up with a planning example, because I'm not a planning lawyer, and I don't know, this is your answer.
From any area of the law. A statutory condition being held irrational because it doesn't go all the way to achieving its objective.
No, I said we had a number of points.
Yes.
Well, this was one of them.
But anyway, you're not able to point to an authority for a condition being held effective.
No, my point is that the conditions don't achieve what they set out to achieve, and that is irrational. We say that because it's too vague a term, because you can't require cohesion.
I mean, I think one of the things you say is, where did they get this idea that if it's not suitable for occupation for twelve months, it's suitable for occupation for ten?
I'm coming, this is thin air. Well, it isn't, it was designed to limit it to students, we assume, we don't know. Even if the concept was clear, it is not necessarily an existence in a house occupied by students, students often live desperately. The two terms are not synonymous, I know there's repetition here, but I'm under rationality here, and you can't take one as a proxy for another. Students do not have a particular mode of occupation per se. They do not necessarily all live happily together in harmonious groups, they don't all go home to happy and comfortable homes for the long vacation. Nor we say does added communal space compensate, I made this area when dealing with cohesive living to ground one, relaxing standards on account of cohesive living. To pursue the useful shorthand is only possible if the cohesive living is real and genuine. We dealt with this in our printed case, I'm going to try and interject at another point, as it were, directed to Lady Black, that in our submission, one shouldn't be led by the idea that these provisions have to work and are aimed at empty properties, because there is absolutely nothing wrong in saying, right, you want to let this to a cohesive group, find a cohesive group, we will entertain your application. Because normally, when a group come together, there's quite a lot that has to be done these days before occupation begins. There's no reason at all, if I, I think, your examples, I buy a property, do it up and...
Yes, I wasn't particularly fussed by that, it's just that the group who move in may move out, the licence may continue.
Then you get the variation.
Yeah.
That was why I drew attention to variation.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that can lead to a different number.
Yeah.
So, going back to our notes. This is where, we dealt with it at our printed case at forty forty-two. Court of Appeal rejected the submission that I've just made, which is, the communal space doesn't add anything unless there is genuine cohesion, to use the paraphrase. Because referring to the nineteen ninety-four guidance, which itself refers to houses occupied on a shared basis, normally occupied by members of a defined group, e.g. students, each enjoying exclusive use of a bedroom, would share other facilities, including a communal living space. This is the point my lord made. The Institute recommended that where a living room was provided, the minimum acceptable size for a bedroom could be less, not would be, could be, because that's all it was doing, was setting up circumstances where an authority may wish to depart from standards. Court of Appeal said that that contradicted the submission that communal space did not compensate, but it misunderstands the guidance. Guidance was it could only be indicated in circumstances in which it was suggested that authorities might, on a case-by-case basis, reduce space requirements, and I've never taken any issue with that at all. All sharing arrangement might do so. Far cry from an assumption that if there is additional space, it will be used. That a student doesn't use the communal living room because, and I agree that I'm going to, a rare example, he may wish to study. Then, I deliberately used masculine pronouns there. You know, the element of cohesive living, which takes off the pressure that the room is too small, is not achieved. He or she is driven into that tiny room. There's nowhere else to study. And that certainly is an issue of health. And we can bear in mind, even if tribunals accepted it's too small without cohesive living, so the tribunals accepted that it was too small without cohesive living. By implication, by necessary implication, they've accepted that. They also actually, on the face of it, accepted it too small even with cohesive living for more than ten months of the year, and we just, I can't really speak to that one. That's there, that, and it. What the authority was saying in the paragraph I read out, paragraph twenty-nine, is consonance with what we've been submitting. Cohesiveness cannot be presumed, reduction of standards can only follow where it really does exist. Individual decisions, individual arrangements. The issue is not about whether there's shared space elsewhere for an occupier, but whether the occupier has sufficient private space of his or her own, to which he or she can retreat when he or she wants to be alone, when he or she is upset or depressed, or if he or she wants to study. Over provision in a combined kitchen, dining room, living room, is what we're talking about, cannot compensate for under provision of private space unless the occupier has committed to that sort of sharing, which means that he or she is willing to forego minimum private space. Very simple, really, how can extra communal space make up for lack of private space? It only works if there will actually be some sort of cohesion to which the occupiers have subscribed as part of their attentions as to the living arrangements. And it has to be their attentions, no one else can prescribe living arrangements for anyone else. Nor do the conditions which have been imposed actually achieve cohesive living. Even as elaborated by the Court of Appeal, all it does is keep the room available. Comparison with not using a kitchen is not light with light. The need for private space is not the same as the need for a home-cooked meal. Again and again, this is top-down, describing a class and assuming how it will use and occupy, rather than looking at how property is to be used and occupied and determining in the light of it whether standards can be relaxed. I do turn to the ten-month condition, which seems to us is irrational, perverse on its face. It cannot be because it's healthier than for twelve months, there's simply no evidence for that. It may be based on an assumption either that there is a home to go back to, or anyway, that it's one the superiority of the conditions of which will in some sense compensate for how the occupiers had to live for most of the year. That would truly be an extraordinary assumption and an unsound one. Reality is more likely it was designed to limit occupation to students. But first, what it does is to limit it to students who take long vacations. And we, at our paragraph thirty-seven, we describe some other types of course of study, including medical students who go all the way through. And the two-year courses, I know that will sound as if I'm grabbing something recent, but they have been around for quite a long time. It's just that there's more emphasis on them now. And secondly, it still assumes that students live in a particular way. We also contend that this condition is unenforceable. Pausing here to construe it, it is clear that it means a total of ten months over the year, as opposed to ten continuous months. We get this from the wording, ten calendar months over a period of a year. We don't see how the authority can possibly monitor this, how any authority could. Yes, if you've got cohesive living, my lady, Lady Black's example, you can pop in, as it were, once a year or something, check whether there's been any variation. But if you've got ten months over a year, what does it say? How often do you have to go in, more than a total of two months? It's just unenforceable. The landlord suggested, this is at CV page four five oh, at his eight point three point three, it was his submissions, that rent books could be inspected. It is a bit bizarre because there was no evidence that there are rent books in these cases, and there's no obligation for there to be a rent book. The obligation to have rent books is only weekly tenancies. I have to say it's so long since I saw a rent book, I can't bear in them what they look like. And to the contrary, the tenancy agreements the landlord produced are twelve-month assured short-haul lettings. Which means that the property had to be occupied as in only your main home, like close to your main residence, for the year. He also suggested, at the same reference, that visual inspection would give a clearer idea as to nature of occupation. But it's very difficult to understand what the authority, unless the authority had to be notified of a period of non-occupation and to clock it. I mean, that the iPhone and laptop are missing, what does that say? They've gone away for a month or a day, I mean, it's just impossible. In particular, it's wrong to suggest, as the Court of Appeal does at thirty, it's no more difficult than policing adherence to conditions which prevent a building from being an HMO in the first place, e.g. the provision of domestic services, indeed investigating whether somebody is occupying as a main residence. Those are facts which it is manifestly easier to police than whether or not someone has been in occupation for ten months over the course of a year. If they go home every weekend, a hundred days, that's more than two months. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't breach it. Then it goes on, this is called volume page one six seven in the upper tribunal. If I had accepted that the time limit is impossible to police and ought therefore not to be included, the more appropriate solution would have been to delete it. And one does end up wondering why it's there at all. Rather than permanently to prohibit the youth, I'm almost, I'm at the end of my two hours, I'm almost.
You are at the end of your two hours, Mr Arden.
No, I said I am at the end.
You are, yes.
Yes, I, I'm almost at the end of my submissions.
Well.
And Mr Moffat very kindly said I could encroach for five minutes or so, but still so.
Maybe less than five minutes.
Just to put in one point on the facts, which I just want to put on the record, it was never a question of not allowing the rooms to be used for sleeping permanently. It was always the case that they couldn't be used without alterations so as to make them slightly larger. Now, originally, those were costed in fifteen hundred, two thousand pounds, and then somehow by the time of the hearing, they'd risen to over five thousand, so we didn't object to that, which arguably we should have. But even so, five thousand is not a lot of money in terms of alterations to make a room available for letting. These rooms go for about eighty-eight pounds a week. So, you know, we would never, as it were, barring its use permanently, this has always only been about money, about spending the money to adjust the attic rooms so that each of them was adequate size. It's always, this whole thing is about moving a partition, non-load-bearing partition wall, blunt way. And we finally submitted that a full-time education requirement is itself unenforceable. We spell that out in paragraphs fifty-six to fifty-eight, I'm not going to go to it, not only because I've run out of time, but not because we are abandoning the point or placing less reliance on it, because it's a fairly set, it's a set of fairly technical reasons going to eviction and the recovery of possession. And I'd just be repeating what I said there, and I'm confident I wouldn't want that. And my lady, that is two minutes.
One minute over. I use this clock.
Bludgeoned.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Arden. Miss Caffaky?
My lady, thank you. If it's convenient to the court, what I propose to do in the time available to me is to deal with five points. First of all, what I want to do is set the scene, as it were, and explain what the Secretary of State says is really the key issue on this appeal. Secondly, I want to take the court to some relevant documentation to explain what we say is the policy that underpins the two thousand and four act. And thirdly, I want to explain why we say that the approach of the Court of Appeal and the tribunals below undermines that policy. Fourthly, I want to look briefly at the statutory provisions and explain how we say they should be interpreted to accord with the statutory policy. And finally, and briefly, I'll just touch on the issue of the very recent regulations which Mr Arden mentioned in his submissions. So, taking the first point, setting the scene. We say in order to identify the key issue, it's important to understand the effect of the Court of Appeal's decision and the tribunals below. The starting point, as Mr Arden has pointed out, is that the first-tier tribunal accepted that in general, it was not appropriate to use the relevant attic rooms in the two houses as sleeping accommodation. That's where the first-tier tribunal started from. It's paragraph twenty-eight of the tribunal decision in the Rothsea Avenue case, which is page one seven seven of the core volume, and it's paragraph fifty-seven of the tribunal decision in the Bute Avenue case, which is at page one eight nine. So in general terms, the tribunal accepted that the maximum numbers that had been specified by the local authority in the two licences were appropriate. But what the first-tier tribunal then went on to decide was that an exception to that general position would apply if the occupiers were students or if they otherwise engaged in what the tribunal described as cohesive living. So where the occupiers were students or engaged in that type of living, the effect of the tribunal's decision was that each of the HMOs was suitable for occupation by a greater number of persons than it otherwise would have been, a greater number than was identified in the original licences. Now, the Court of Appeal held that in order to give proper effect to the first-tier tribunal and the upper tribunal's reasoning, it was necessary to impose a condition restricting the occupation of the whole house to students. The court may recall that when the first-tier tribunal dealt with this, they focused only on the attic room. They didn't focus on the house as a whole. So in light of that decision-making structure, the effect of the decisions below is firstly that the maximum number of persons or households for which an HMO is licensed can vary according to the class of occupier who lives in it or the mode of occupation. Secondly, a condition can be imposed restricting occupation to a particular class of persons. Under the condition imposed by the Court of Appeal, no one other than a student can live in either of these two houses. And thirdly, a condition like that may be imposed for the purpose of authorising a greater number of persons than would be authorised if it were not imposed. So that in essence is the structure of the decision-making and the effect of the decisions of the courts and tribunals below. And we say that in the light of that, the key issue that arises on this appeal is the one that's set out in paragraphs fifty-eight to fifty-nine of our written case. And it really raises the question of whether or not a local authority, putting to one side the tribunal's powers on appeal for these purposes, can grant a licence for an HMO which authorises the HMO to be occupied by a greater number of households or persons than it would otherwise authorise, and it was otherwise suitable for, on the basis of a condition restricting occupation to a particular class of persons. And that's why we say the focus needs to be on section sixty-four, because that's the section that deals with the maximum number of persons. And our answer to that question is no, and we base that answer on the legislative policy and what we say the proper interpretation of section sixty-four is. So that's how we say this appeal should be approached. Can I move on then to the second main area of my submissions, which is the legislative policy underpinning the act? And this is most clearly set out, we say, in the consultation paper, which preceded the design of the scheme, as it were. And the court will find that behind the first tab, tab thirty-eight of volume three, beginning at page one one eight oh. And if it's convenient to the court, I want to take the court through some, just some paragraphs of this. Unfortunately, this is a different version in the sense that it's been set out from a web version and the version has been cross-referenced in our written case. So I just want to go to some of the key passages in order to highlight them. And can I start on the first page at one one eight oh, which sets out the ministerial forward to the consultation paper, and the court will see in paragraph two that HMOs are a key source of housing for significant and often vulnerable groups of people in our society. These may include the young, including students, the mobile and socially economic, and those are socially economically disadvantaged, perhaps through breakdowns of various kind, and those seeking asylum. Then paragraph three, unfortunately, some of the worst conditions in housing is found in HMOs. They're not only squalid, but they can be death traps. And then there's reference to poor heart, poor fire, health and safety standards, and overcrowding and inadequate facilities. Paragraph four, the current legislation is inadequate, in parts unworkable, and fails to deliver better conditions or reduce risk. Our objective must be to raise standards without reducing supply, allowing the standards to be effectively and consistently enforced, and for standards to be proportionate to risk. So very much starting there, but the idea that standards in these types of houses is something that needs to be addressed. If I can then go on to the introduction, which is on page one one eight two over the page, which elaborates on the government's intention at this stage. Paragraph two in particular, again referring to the important role they provide in providing housing for young people and the socially and economically disadvantaged, the fact that such people often find it's the only choice of housing that they have in practical terms. But again, there are problems with this type of housing. And then the final sentence, the government's aim is to ensure that HMOs are safe and provide acceptable basic living conditions, and to protect the most vulnerable sections of the community from exploitation by unscrupulous or uncaring landlords. So they're setting out the aim of having a basic standard of accommodation, basic acceptable living conditions. That was where the genesis of the scheme that we have today came from. If I can take that forward into the meat of the document and going on to page one one eight six, which sets out the background, and again, repeating the point in paragraph one about the important role that it plays for providing accommodation for the young and people who are otherwise disadvantaged, and then highlighting the problems with HMOs, poor fire, poor health and safety, overcrowding, inadequate facilities. And that's elaborated. And that's elaborated on in paragraphs ten and eleven, which goes on to set out some of the risks that arise in HMOs, which could arise generally in the housing sector, in paragraph ten, and then in paragraph eleven, dealing with some risks that are particularly specific to HMOs, and in particular, arising out of multiple occupancy. So again, looking at the standards that apply in these types of houses. And then we get to paragraph thirty, the way forward, page one-one-nine-one, and the commitment from the government. The government is committed to introducing a national mandatory licensing scheme for HMOs to ensure that they are safe and provide acceptable, basic living conditions, and protect occupants from exploitation by unscrupulous or uncaring landlords. So again, it's about basic, acceptable living conditions. That's the bedrock for present purposes, and so far as relevant present purposes of the scheme. Then we have the key issues are set out in section three of the consultation paper, beginning on one-one-nine-three, and just to pick up for the Court, paragraph twenty-seven on one-one-nine-eight, which sets out the deliberate intention to ensure that student housing is captured by the new licensing regime. That's at the very bottom of page one-one-nine-eight, going over onto page one-one-nine-nine. And of course, that was part of the, the aim of the new scheme was to address the decision that the Court's been shown in Barnes, where the Court of Appeal said that a shared student house was not an HMO, and therefore fell out with the then-existing regime. And then we get to part C, what standards should be achieved, at the bottom of page one-thousand-two-hundred. Paragraph one, the objective of the scheme should be to ensure acceptable standards in three main areas, physical standards of the premises, general standard of management of fitness of the licensee and possibly others. It's essential that standards are published and consistently applied. And then we go to one-two-oh-one, and paragraph six, the bold text in the middle of the page. The government proposes that license should specify a maximum number of occupants which would reflect firstly, the condition of the premises, and secondly, standards of management. There should be as now a discretion to set a lower number of occupants as an alternative to carrying out certain improvements. There should also be an option for prohibiting the use of particular parts of the house, for example, an attic bedroom. So there, where the government is setting out its intention, certainly no reference to the characteristics of occupants. It's all about the conditions of the premises and the standards of management, and there's certainly no suggestion anywhere in this document that the basic acceptable level of accommodation would vary according to the type of person who lived in the house. So that's the nineteen ninety-nine consultation paper. Essentially, that was made flesh in the bill that became the Act. The Court has, behind tab thirty-nine at page one-two-three-three, the consultation on the bill. We don't need to go to it, but for the Court's note at page one-two-four-eight, on page three, it simply reaffirms the intentions as set out in the nineteen ninety-nine consultation paper, and refers to the fact that the government had given a commitment to that effect. So, in summary on that, we say that the documents demonstrate that a key purpose of this Act was to ensure that the potentially vulnerable occupants of these types of houses, of HMOs, enjoyed acceptable, basic living conditions. There is certainly nothing in the documentation to suggest that that might vary, that that might be different, acceptable, basic living conditions, as between different classes of occupiers. And as the Court has seen in that emboldened paragraph six, there was no suggestion there that the characteristics of occupiers should be a factor when deciding the maximum number for a license. And students and young people are repeatedly mentioned throughout the consultation paper, but there's certainly no suggestion in there that they should in any way have a lower standard of accommodation. So that's what we say about the policy underpinning the Act. Can I then explain why we say that the Court of Appeal and the tribunals below decided this matter in a way which undermines that policy? The starting point for this has to be that the consequence of the Court of Appeal and the tribunal's decisions is that the relevant class, students, will have a lower standard of accommodation than other classes. The fabric of these two HMOs does not change depending on who lives in it. It's always got the same number of rooms, it's always got the same square footage or square meterage of rooms, it always has a living room or a kitchen and a certain number of bathrooms. And as a result of that, occupation by a greater number of people, which is what the tribunals and the Court of Appeal decided should happen in these cases, results in a lower standard on two levels. It results in a lower standard on an individual level, because the individual who goes into that attic room, which the tribunal said was not suitable for someone other than a student, will obviously have a lower standard of accommodation than somebody who is not a student, because the tribunal said somebody who isn't a student shouldn't be living in that room. On a group level, again, there's a basic point, there will be an additional person in the house, so there will be a greater number of persons sharing exactly the same facilities. So we say on any view, the consequence of the decisions below is that the occupiers, as students, will have a lower standard of accommodation than they would have done if they were occupying the HMOs other than as students. That result is a consequence of the Court of Appeal and the tribunals below making assumptions. In Mr. Chamberlain's written case at paragraph fifty-one-one, he accepts that the Court of Appeal and the tribunals proceeded on the basis of generalizations as to how students live. In effect, as Mr. Arden has submitted, the Courts below proceeded on the basis of an assumption as to how a particular class of persons will interact with each other when they actually live in the house. But Mr. Chamberlain goes on to accept that not all students will necessarily actually live in that way, and he's right to do so. And indeed, this has previously been recognized by the Court of Appeal. In the Barnes case, to which Mr. Arden took you briefly, Sir Thomas Bingham, then sitting as the master of the roll, said at page eight-nine-five, page seven-two-five of the Housing Law Report, that it is inherent in student life that groups will vary in their habits so far as sharing expenses and generally mucking in are concerned. Now, Mr. Chamberlain says, well, this isn't problematic, there's nothing objectionable in proceeding on the basis of an assumption as to how a class of persons will interact with each other. But in the context of this legislation, we say that it is objectionable. In this field, as in so many other fields, the problem with assumptions is that they are not necessarily borne out in practice. Now, we almost put to one side the fact that in this case there is no evidence to support the assumptions, and indeed, the Secretary of State concluded in a recent response to a consultation document, and we don't need to go to it, but the Court will find this at page one-four-eight-three, that there was no evidence, when the Secretary of State was looking at national minimum room sizes, that students were content to occupy smaller rooms. So if anything, the weight of evidence, insofar as there is any evidence, is pointing against the assumption, but we can put that to one side, because the problem with the assumption is that it introduces the risk that the HMO will not in fact be occupied by persons who interact in the way envisaged. As Mr. Arden has admitted, licenses generally last for five years, the maximum under the Act is five years, the Secretary of State is, reminds, that generally they should last for five years, although a shorter period is permissible. But there are, in any view, and this goes perhaps to one of the points that Lady Black was making, there are likely to be several sets of occupiers over the duration of a license, each of whom will be likely to act, interact in different ways with each other. Now, if the HMO is in fact occupied by persons who don't interact in the way that the tribunal and the Court of Appeal envisaged, on the first-tier tribunal's decision, at that point, the HMO will be occupied by more people than it is suitable for. That inevitably follows. As a result, at that point, the HMO will not provide the basic acceptable accommodation that the 2004 Act was intended to ensure.
Can I just be clear, is this a rationality argument you're?
No, it's about the policy, it's about the policy.
No, we're either dealing with a question of interpretation.
Yes.
Or section sixty-four, or section sixty-six, sixty-seven, or we're dealing with a question of rationality.
It's an interpretation point, Lord, it goes to the proper interpretation of the Act. I'm about to come to the provisions in a moment, but we're saying the Act should be interpreted in a way that supports the statute.
No, but we've got to pace the fact, the first, the tribunals, which were the judges of fact, have reached a decision which you may disagree with.
Yes, yes. This is not an irrationality argument, this is, no, no, I can make that clear, it's not an irrationality, this goes to interpretation, because what it does is it illustrates the fact that this sort of approach will be very likely to undermine the statutory purpose, we say. That's why it's important to recognize, as I said, the scene that I set at the beginning about the effect of the Court of Appeals and the tribunal's judgment, and actually how they work in practice, and actually what the consequences of those decisions and the conditions they imposed are. And we say that Parliament can't have intended that the Act should be operated in that way. Mr. Chamberlain seeks to get around this problem by putting forward an alternative condition, and this is the condition about an HMO being let only to persons who intend to occupy or to share communal living space. Now, putting to one side the difficulties with formulating an appropriate condition in this respect, which Mr. Arden dealt with in his submissions, and certainly wouldn't suggest that Mr. Chamberlain's condition would achieve that, even if it were possible to come up with an appropriate condition of that nature, it still relies upon the occupiers actually interacting in that way. And just as an assumption might not be borne out in reality, those intentions might change, or they might not be acted upon. Or, as Mr. Arden pointed out, it may be that vulnerable people who find it difficult to get into accommodation will be willing to say that they will live in an interactive way in order to have a chance of being able to let the HMO. And again, references in the consultation paper to this being a field where there are problems with unscrupulous landlords, landlords saying to tenants, well, if you sign up to this particular agreement to live in this way, I'll let you live in my house. Again, that undermines the intention of Parliament. So Mr. Chamberlain's alternative approach essentially collapses back into the same problems as the student condition approach, we say. So turning then to the actual provisions of the Act, the Court has seen them, and essentially, to a large extent, we make very similar points to those made by Mr. Arden on the key provisions. And if I can just take the Court very, very quickly through them, it's in volume one of the Authorities bundle behind tab one, and it's beginning at page six-two-eight, where we have the definition of a license in subsection two, and echoing the point that Mr. Arden essentially made about this, that it's referring to persons and households without qualification. It's referring to persons and households generally. There's nothing in here to suggest that the maximum number would vary according to different classes of occupiers. The same point can be made about what we say is the key provision, section sixty-four-three, which the Court will find at page six-three-one. Again, there's no qualification, there's no suggestion that Parliament intended this to mean, anything other than number of households generally, or number of persons generally. And again, a point that's in our written case and was made by Mr. Arden, the key point about sixty-four-three is it's about conditions that make the house suitable for the occupiers. It's not providing for conditions that make the occupiers suitable for the house. That's the way Parliament chose to word it. And we say that reflects the statutory policy. And just going on, just to deal very quickly with a point on section sixty-seven, with one eye on the clock. As Mr. Arden's indicated, we're perhaps stacked between the two parties on section sixty-seven, in that we accept that section sixty-seven is broad enough to allow a restriction on occupation by certain people in general terms. Given the use of the words use and occupation, it's difficult to see how that section could be interpreted in any other way. Going to my Lord Wilson's question about whether or not section sixty-seven is tied to section sixty-four-three, we would say it's not tied to section sixty-four-three. And one of the examples in which, one of the ways in which might be given as an example of that is sixty-seven-two-B, conditions requiring the taking of reasonable and practical steps to prevent or reduce antisocial behaviour by persons occupying parties. Again, that wouldn't obviously have an effect on the maximum number, but one could see a condition that might come within that that could restrict occupation. There might, in a particular case, be a condition restricting occupation to individuals in relation to whom a landlord had received a satisfactory reference, for example, if there'd been particular problems with antisocial behaviour in a particular house managed by a particular landlord. So we don't say that section sixty-seven necessarily must follow section sixty-four-three, and that it is wider than that, and essentially, whether or not a particular condition is going to be lawful must be judged against, as in the ordinary way, given there is no indication of the purpose to be achieved, the statutory purposes. And the Court will finally have picked up the point in section sixty-seven-five, that of course, there is no power to require occupiers to accept restrictions or obligations as a condition of a license. So unless a particular occupier signs up to a condition saying they're going to live in a particular way, there is no power to require them actually to live in that way. So just on that rather rapid tour, drawing the threads together, we say that a local authority cannot grant a license for an HMO which authorizes that HMO to be occupied by a greater number of persons or households than it otherwise would be, otherwise would grant, on the basis of a condition restricting occupation of the HMO to occupation by a particular class. In particular, we rely upon the legislative policy. Otherwise, we say local authorities, the tribunal is driven to make assumptions, and that brings with it the risk that one ends up with people living in these houses in circumstances where it has been accepted that it is unsuitable for them to live there, and that is totally contrary to the statutory policy. And we also say it's contrary to the wording of the Act, and in particular, we rely upon section sixty-four-three and the way that is targeted at conditions in relation to the house, not conditions in relation to occupiers. In the, I don't know, the milady, ladies' hails clock is ticking towards, just in the final minute or so available to me, just to deal very quickly with the new regulations. They were made on the twenty-third of May, and they will come into force on the first of October, as the Court may have picked up. The purpose of the regulations is essentially to incorporate the overcrowding, minimum space standards in the Housing Act nineteen eighty-five into licenses under the HMO regime, and that was done because there was an upper tribunal case, which in effect said that local authorities weren't allowed to impose those minimum overcrowding standards as a blanket condition, that they still had to look at the facts of each individual case. So it was to address that particular decision, which is the Clark decision, which is tab twenty-three of the Authorities bundle. So what the regulations do is they in effect impose mandatory minimum bedroom sizes. Now, insofar as Mr. Chamberlain says that that assists his case, because they differentiate between different classes of person, it is true that the regulations provide for different sizes according to whether someone is under ten or over ten, but that is simply reflecting the longstanding legislative policy in the Housing Act nineteen eighty-five, which makes the same distinction and applies the same space standards. But in any event, there is absolutely nothing in the twenty-eighteen regulations which would allow a local authority to license an HMO for a greater number of people than it otherwise would do. Essentially, what the twenty-eighteen regulations do is impose a cap. The maximum number permitted by the twenty-eighteen regulations will always be the same, regardless of who. of who occupies the policy. It doesn't, a group occupies the HMO. So, as such, we say that the 2018 regulations are actually consistent with the legislative policy that I've identified about basic acceptable standards, and they don't undermine our position on this appeal. I hope that brings me in on time.
Absolutely on time, according to this.
I'm grateful.
Thank you very much indeed. Well, that makes it a suitable point for us to adjourn, and we look forward to hearing from Mr. Chamberlain at two o'clock.